Yes.
I have my full script here, but I'm supposed to... Are you recording it?
Yep.
And Mr. Nash is recording it. Anybody else who'd like to report the meeting? We've done only those two. No flags, so we're not pledging allegiance, right?
What's that?
No flags, so we're not pledging allegiance. There's no preliminary sense that I went to do it.
You ought to put a flag on board docs, now we can see.
I'm looking for my teleprompter. Hood pond agreement. So this is a situation, as I understand it. We were... I don't think there's any substantive difference here, but we were trying to make sure we had the insurance provision correct. And we have clarified that they were added and continue to be an additional insurer under the town general liability policy. There's two more questions. One is, do we know if there are in the workers' comp policy?
They wouldn't be. They're not employees of the town, so they wouldn't be on our policy.
What about their employees?
They're not on our policy, no.
They're not, okay.
They wouldn't follow by.
So the... Give me two seconds to get this... Okay. So the Article III insurance that stands before us or sits before us at the moment says, "The licensee..." So that's them. So first off, that needs to be changed to licensure. That's the town, right? "...shall maintain general liability coverage in an amount acceptable to the town." So that's the first change that would have to be made.
Well, I think it's...
Go ahead.
I thought it was two. I thought both of us. We have an umbrella policy, but I was under the impression that they also have a base policy.
They made a difference to the third pron or the third second. So that's the first. That would need to be changed to licensure. And then it has to be a period and... Some of the... I'm gonna skip the workers' comp for a second. But this... The wording has to be changed to make it clear that they're not under the town of workers' comp.
The licensee.
And the last sentence now says, "Any and all other insurance relating to the management operation of a premises is the responsibility of the licensee." So that's it. So we need to delete... One way to do it would be to delete the workers' comp clause. Then it follows the third one, and that's specific.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay. So at the risk of redundancy, if we move forward, the motion should amend Article III insurance to say, "The licensure..." To delete the words, "In workers' compensation insurance as may be reasonably requested, as required to protect the licensee from claims under GL, check to 152, the workers' compensation law." Those are the technicalities. We have at least two ways to go. The hood pond folks not able to attend. But I don't believe there's any compensation that's necessary. So we can either put this on act and put this again back on the agenda, or we can take the motion to approve the agreement with the state of change of the issue.
Have the hood pond folks been told that they're responsible for workers' comp?
No, because we figured out the first.
I would suggest we postpone it so that we can alert them rather than have them come back and subsequent.
Whoa, 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 this is not gonna work.
Have we ever seen their check policy?
Yeah. They know they have. They have two kinds of insurance. They have the workers' comp and they have the director's insurance.
But this says, "We're covering the workers' comp."
Now, right now, it says they are.
Well, now it says they are. If we change it to "or," and we take it out, then we're okay.
But your understanding is they are. They have them, and they're aware of those, as you said.
It's the right... The way I understood it, yes, from what they said.
Then we'd still have to break that into two sentences, so that's showing that we have to...
Well, the wording works, that's the question. I just don't want any surprise about them being responsible for the workers' comp.
We can wait, obviously. Put this on the 20th.
That's right.
It's not resolved. Well, it is in the sense that, not really, but there's not a lot of swimming going on now. But I think it officially ends at the end of December, and we'd like to have them responsible for that whole place in case somebody calls or there's some issues or whatever else. They're responsible for it. But, you know, there's nothing critical because there's no swimming.
So why don't we just postpone it to the next meeting?
Yeah, the 20th.
Take that sentence out so that the document we will have before us will be...
Is correct. The licensee is already correct.
And someone follow up with them to make sure.
Yeah, with that, we should.
They should get a copy of the modified agreement tomorrow. You know what it is. Let's get it to them and explain what has changed and say, "Is this okay?"
I would also use this opportunity to ask them just four copies, proof of insurance.
Yep. I think it's a great idea. It's a great idea. With that in hand, it'll, I think, be a no-brainer too.
Okay. Item number two, we have a problem with existing ambulance. Fire chief is here today. Does someone's...
I didn't know you were on. It's fine. Thank you. I bring the body mount for A2, which was found on the ground a few weeks ago. So just as, let's see, just a little history. A2 is backup to a backup ambulance, so it's the backup to our A1. This is the backup to Northeast Regional Ambulance. It was purchased on September... It was given to the town on September 18th of 2006. The Topsfield Fire Fighting Relief Association purchased it and donated to the town. It's served us well for 12 years. Like I said, it's the backup for our ambulance, and when Northeast is not available. And it's used if there's several patients, so we need to transport more than two or three patients. It's, as you know, the replacement of that vehicle is actually on the capital plan for FY '20, so that's the beginning conversations we're having about that. It's unfortunate that it just couldn't last that long. So we found that, actually, probably like nine months ago, we found another piece that was similar to that, that was a cab mount that we had repaired at New Meadows Auto. When we found that, I actually had it towed to New Meadows Auto and they repaired it. When we found that on the ground, I spoke to New Meadows Auto. They said, "Bring it down. We'll look at it." They said, "Body mount way beyond us. Go to sound, brake, and clutch." Took it there. They said, "We won't touch it." So I went to Greenwood, who is our... That's who we bought our... Previously, we bought our fire engines from and things like that. And they looked at... Their mechanic looked at it and said, "It's all rotted underneath, the brake lines, the body mounts, and there's no guarantee that that box on the back of the ambulance won't come off." So he said it would be... It should be condemned. It shouldn't be used. So I have taken it out of service. It's not been used since that. So it's in the station. So you have my memo, so you can see all the things that were wrong with it and were repaired with it. So right now, we don't have a backup to the ambulance. So how does that affect us? We transport... We've transported each day this week to the hospital with a patient for one reason or the other, whether it be mutual aid to another community, someone from our community, and Northeast wasn't available, or whatever. Every time that we do that, now the town is without an ambulance. Last week, when A1 had its regular annual inspection for, you know, your 12-year, 12-month inspection sticker, it was out of service. We didn't have another vehicle for it. So it's important to have that vehicle as a backup and also to take if we have more than one patient that's injured or more than two patients that's injured. So it's important to have that. I went to... Because a lot of times, some departments do have extra vehicles that they could loan. So I went to Gloucester Fire. I went to Lynnfield Fire, because they have ambulances. The truth of the matter is, they have ambulances that are way bigger, bigger than what we can fit in our station. So then I called Greenwood again and asked them, because people turn in their ambulances when they buy new ambulances. So I went down, looked at a couple of ambulances they had. This one that they're offering to let us use is from West Boylston. West Boylston turned it in when they got a new ambulance. I spoke to the chief in West Boylston. He said, "He just replaced the fuel injectors in it, that it has a small oil leak, but other than that, it's been maintained and it's sound." He knows. We know it's all kind of a toss-up. But anyway, so Greenwood has been a great partner to the town of Topsfield. We bought our last two fire engines from them and other vehicles throughout time, and we have a really good relationship with them. And they were happy to help us during this time. So they offered us either that there was an air fire truck engine, which is, I mean, an air ambulance, which was even older.
You mean A-Y-E-R, not A-Y?
I do. I know. Yeah, yeah. A-Y, yeah. A-Y, which also I spoke to that chief, and he said it was also... It was mechanically sound too. But so Greenwood has offered to sell us, because that's what they have to do in order to be able to get registered and insured, that ambulance. Because frankly, it sits on their lot and does nothing for anyone on their lot, because there's not a lot of market for used ambulances like this. So it's an opportunity to... I would have that... Our current A2 deemed surplus at some point, because its value is in the engine. It has a really good engine, as I'm told. So that somebody might desire that to put in one of their trucks down the road. But so the goal would be to declare that surplus and then fill in with this A2 from West Boylston, from Greenwood, until we go through the process of our fiscal year '20 process.
Is that where the 240 days comes from?
Yes, exactly. Thank you. Yeah. I didn't... They had originally put 120 days, and I asked them if they could extend it, because it's just a bad timing. It's really bad timing. So that's why I put those days on.
I have a question for you too, but I think you answered it, and I think I've answered it for myself. You said that you bought a couple of trucks from Greenwood.
Yes.
The question was, how well do you know Greenwood? And you know him well, obviously.
Yeah, we bought the peers, this engine two and engine three.
Another question, and I think I know the answer already, is why would they be willing to sell you one for a buck? At the end of 240 days, you obviously have to pay for it, but...
Or give it back to them, yes.
Or give it back to them, and they want $10,000 for the truck.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Why? It's because, like I said, because we have a relationship with them. We're good customers of them.
And they're hoping you buy another fire engine.
And they are. And frankly, there is... Nobody is looking at that truck. That truck is just sitting on their lot. Actually, when I was there, he tried to sell me a demo that has been sitting on his... A demo ambulance that's been sitting on his lot for three years. It's brand-new, except it's three years old. And he tried to sell me that. So that particular, that smaller ambulance isn't in high demand now. For us, it's the only thing we can do, because our station is so small. Our station slopes back. So it's the only thing we can do, is a small ambulance like that.
Jen, now, are there any expenses associated with this new truck that you would not have incurred with the old one? It almost sounds like the old one was costing you a lot of money.
It was. That was. Yeah, because I said that. I paid $1,500 to get it repaired in July, when the cab mount fell off. So it was becoming more expensive to run than not. You know, the chief in West Boylston said it's been taken care of. They're gonna put signs on it to cover up the West Boylston, to say Topsfield on it. And then, as it turns out, this is exactly the time when our state licensure is due for our ambulances. So I had already mailed in, trying to be ahead of time, mailed in the application for both ambulances to be renewed and their license. So I spoke to the Department of Public Health, and they're willing to hold that fee off and not apply it to the ambulances we have now, but to whatever we bring in. So that wouldn't be an additional cost. And there'll be... We'll have to move things over, but we're gonna do that in-house. So there may be... I mean, I'm not sure what its inspection... I'll probably have to get it re-inspected, because when we register it to the town, it would change that. And I'm sure there'll be some registry fees and things like that, but...
Jen, is your thought that if you have this $1 ambulance, assuming that we go forth and approve the capital expenditure necessary to buy a new ambulance, you buy the new ambulance, basically trade in this $1, get the $1 ambulance back, and you then would have the current A1 would become your sort of number two?
No, A1 will stay A1.
Will stay A1, but it'll be the older of the two in terms of...
If we bought a brand-new one.
That's true. If you bought a brand-new one, if you choose to buy a used, as you indicated, then maybe...
I personally have had some initial discussions with Kelly and with my FinCom rep that I believe that it is not responsible to buy a brand-new truck for that role.
Yep.
But that's just in the beginning stages.
Yeah, there is still a way to go.
And the fact of the matter is, it may come down to something that we... Because we're unique, because the station is so small, that puts us under different constraints for trucks, so...
The issue of costing too much to maintain and keep on the road becomes a secondary issue, because the issue is downtime. If it's out of service and you need the thing, that's the problem, the real problem, in my opinion.
Right. And of course, in this timeframe, we're relying on mutually partners. So, you know, whether that be the town of Middleton, the town of Wenham, or Northeast Regional, if they have any... That's what we're relying on, so... But I just want to update you that that's kind of where we're at.
Would there be any change in the insurance amount required to insure this truck versus the one that we currently have?
I don't believe so.
Probably not substantial.
I don't think years to...
Well, it's newer. It's newer than ours now, so...
Which is why...
The insurance policy is gonna cost a little bit more, but probably not a major amount.
And it will come... Obviously, the other one will come right off at the same time, or it can come off now, because it's not being driven, so, either way. But that's where we're at with that, and...
But right now, it's not safe to drive.
It is not. I mean, subject matter experts have told me not to drive it, so...
The state certainly wouldn't have been able to certify it when they come to do their annual inspections.
Do you have any idea on the availability of a used fire truck or, I mean, an ambulance when you get ready to buy one? Okay.
It's an air truck.
I noticed there's no comment. That's okay.
Well, I mean, I have no idea, but I'm... I mean, there's people...
But there's gonna be some available, you're saying?
Yes, and there are known entities that we know exactly their maintenance. Like that, to me, is the... And we've been... Have a great partner as well with New Meadows Auto in town. And actually, Country Motors, too, are great, but they will look at, you know, the trucks before and vet them out too, so...
And that whole process is the regular budget process that you're going through.
That's right. That's right, yep.
Yep. Yeah, we're preparing the capital plan. Originally, it was in there for $250,000 for purchase of the new one. So since then, we're waiting for revised quotes and numbers, and so I'm working with the chief on getting the right number based on a used vehicle.
I'd like to make a statement about the fact that this is not an expansion of the ambulance service for the town of Topsfield. Period.
It's a replacement of a condemned vehicle.
That's...
Yeah, but there still represents a question on the part of the town as to whether you want to replace that or not. There's costs associated with it. I understand what the chief said. It's valuable for backup, but that's also why you have, as you point out, this supporting of the towns or Northeast Ambulance. For example, I'm sure when you sent A1 out to get inspected for several hours, you told Northeast Ambulance, "By the way, we don't have A1 available to us. The other one is condemned. Be more available to us," whatever. That's part of the process. You can't have all the fire trucks that you'll ever need for a big fire in Topsfield. You get help from outside. The same thing here. We don't necessarily have to have two ambulances. It'd be nice to have three ambulances. Then if one goes to get inspected, you still have two to back up each other, whatever. So we can certainly get more and more and more. But there's nothing that says we need to have two ambulances in our firehouse to provide service and good service to the people of Topsfield.
The only people that say that are the professionals that run the friggin' fire department. They're the people that say, "We need to have two ambulances." And you using the term, "The town doesn't agree with that"? That's a pretty broad statement, and I don't have anything that tells me that the town doesn't agree with that.
Well, the town did vote a decade ago, "No way," on two ambulances. So the town did have some input to it, but that's...
That was all predicated on the fact that the premise at that time, that everybody said, "We're gonna go to a full-time ambulance service," and that was not part of it.
I'm just off the thought.
Can I just say?
It is not a requirement. There's no absolute requirement to have a second ambulance in the town of Topsfield, perhaps for a short period of time, maybe forever, but even for a short period of time. As you point out, you sometimes send them away, whatever else.
Can I just say one?
But that's an aside. I'd like to talk about the mechanics.
It's no different than deciding how many trucks you need to plow, snowing away. It's exactly the same argument. Professionals decide.
That could be disgusting during the 2020 budget.
This person had a turn, all right? One person. Jen, I'm trying to...
That could be a question that gets addressed during the 2020 budget, because this isn't changing anything that was agreed to last year. This is maintaining the status quo that was agreed to in the last budget. So it would be a question going forward in the 2020 budget.
It should be. What do you do, though, when you need plows? Do we have enough plows in the town of Topsfield to plow the town?
I have a spare one. It sits up there right now, and it's ready to go to work. If we need one, we have it.
But you know as well as I do, better than I do, that we go out to contract for a lot of our plowing.
Well, of course.
Yes. The same sort of thing with the ambulance.
Okay, let's go out and contract some more then, because we never have enough.
Yeah. Okay. I think it's worth it to hold back on this. Can we talk about the mechanics of it for a moment? I feel very uncomfortable with this agreement as the wording goes here. It's talking about buying something for a dollar. Once you buy something, you own it. That's a contract. It then goes on to say, "You have to give it back," but that's not an ownership. Perhaps this is something that would be a lease or a option to purchase after the dollar, then you have an option to purchase at a later time. But it is certainly not what this says, which is to buy it for a dollar. Once you buy it, you own it. That's a basic contract concept. So I think that this is, as written, is for... Again, if it said lease, I would feel much better. The second point relative to this is...
What did you just say?
If this said lease, I would feel much better.
What did you say? This is written as what? I don't want to mishear you.
Say again.
I'm asking you what you just said.
What did I...
You said a sentence. If this is as written, it is. And I want to know what you said at the end of the sentence, because I don't want to mishear you.
This is wrong as written.
It's wrong. You said it was wrong. I thought you said something...
This does talk about an end sale.
It talks about an end sale. So there's several things you can do. You can have a lease to purchase, or you could have a sort of thing that says, this is an option to buy, a dollar for an option to buy at that, within that period of time, at that price, whatever. But to say that you buy it for a dollar and then you give it back, give it back, maybe somebody would...
I just said through a pyramid that there had to be a sale.
Technically, this is a problem.
No.
It's been reviewed by town council very thoroughly. We went back and forth about three times to make sure, because I did have some of the same...
Yes. I understood from Debbie that KP looked at it, but we're the ones who are responsible.
But we have to be responsible to register it. It's our ambulance. This company does not own ambulances and lease them out. This company sells ambulances. If we don't own it, then my understanding is that we... It then becomes the responsibility of the person leasing it to us, and that's not what they're willing to do. So essentially, the sale is a favor for 240 days, and if we decide to keep it, it's 990. What I would guess it would be, buyer should have the right to cancel this agreement without penalty or obligation, return. If you cancel it, you pay the dollar back, right? You pay the dollar back, or they pay you...
I don't think there's a dollar back. That's...
Well, it just says right here, "Return without financial obliga..." Okay, so this isn't the dollar back, but...
Meaning you don't have to go forward with it, right?
Yeah.
I just can't understand how you can purchase it for a dollar but then have to give it back. It's...
This kind of thing is done in other situations now.
Well, okay. I think that we should work harder to find a way to make this what I would consider appropriately legal.
Even though it's gone through town council?
Yeah, even though it's gone to KP Law, yes.
What would you suggest, Dick, as a next step to make it even more legal?
Well, to work out whatever this issue is with the owner of it that doesn't want to do something relative to the state. I mean, I can understand it. Not their business or whatever, but try to work something out that would actually work.
I'd like to move that we approve an agreement between Greenwood Emergency Vehicle LLC and the town of Topsfield for the acquisition of a used ambulance in the amount of $1, as outlined in the agreement presented in our materials.
Thank you. Okay, now, this is essentially a $10,000 purchase. I can do the mathematics. 9999 plus one is $10,000. So any $10,000 purchase, we should be thinking about going out to bid, thinking about. We should be going out to bid, I believe. And that hasn't happened.
But we're not buying it for $10,000, Dick.
What's that?
We haven't made the decision to purchase it for $10,000. We've made the decision to purchase it for $1, and we make that decision in 239 days.
If you don't return it, so there's this encumbrance.
It's conditional. Buyer agrees to pay the company $9,000, should buyer elect to keep the vehicle beyond 240 days.
So when do we go out to bid if we decide to get it for 9999?
It's not subject to bidding. If it were $10,000 or more, it would be subject to three quotes. However...
It is. $10,000.
It's either a dollar or it's $9,999.
The 9999 also comes in another year. I don't know if that makes any...
And we're in the budget process.
And town council has approved it, has written.
Okay.
I mean, in worst case, it'd be 999, it's like $8 if, you know, that's...
In your letter, Jen, you indicated the words, "Agree upon a price." But the agreement here has a price in it. What did you mean by "agree upon a price"? I thought if there's anything in agreement, it's here already.
It could be. At that point, I was kind of hoping, because I'm thinking of spending less than $9,999, so I would negotiate that price with them at that point if we were gonna buy that ambulance. Depends on how, what it is, but...
A different ambulance.
That, yeah.
You negotiate a different price at the 240-day mark if you decided you wanted to keep it.
I think that's what I would do. It's another year older.
Jen, negotiate a dollar discount. You won't have to go out to bid.
There you go.
Would you consider, just on that point, changing this from 9999 to 9098? It'll just cover it without a question.
Is there a question, though?
No.
Do you think the dollar makes a difference?
Now, there is no actual appropriation for this. So that's not a problem. Within our system, you go to the finance committee, unexpected expense, and you get the dollar from... Because we really live by the laws. There is no appropriation for this. So I believe in order to make this happen, it needs a FinCom reserve fund transfer of a dollar. Simple, dumb, but it does require that in our laws.
Is that the next step after we approve it from a process perspective?
We don't have an appropriate dollar in the financial budget.
Well, shall we?
How should we do it? You just throw in all the stuff here.
You don't have to go up and do that. You need the money.
Don't need a reserve fund transfer if there's a dollar that's applicable in the financial budget.
I have one more second.
We have a motion in the second.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. I'm trying to let people talk, but I don't like them all yelling over each other. I know it's a people-work session. We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Oh, is it favorable?
All right.
Opposed?
I oppose based on my comments.
Can I just say one thing?
Yep.
I'm sorry. To go back to the 2004 vote of town meeting. The town was not asked if they wanted a 24/7 ambulance, fire department, anything like that. They're asked to buy two brand-new ambulances to four full-time people on the recommendation of two different committees that studied the fire department and the ambulance service delivery. So I just feel like that is the truth of what happened. They weren't asked about staffing the 24/7 committee. They weren't any of that stuff. It was the items on the table were two brand-new ambulances and four people. That's what was on the table, as recommended by two...
But there needs to be a correction to that, seriously.
It's been mischaracterized for 14 years.
I know. I just wanted to call out to say that. I know.
There were two questions. One was ambulances, and another one was for staffing. The ambulances went down decisively, more so than even before personnel addition. So just the two separate ones.
But we're mid-budgetary here. There is nothing happening here except for maintaining the status quo, addressing public safety, addressing safety of anyone that would be asked to drive the vehicle. It is absolutely in the appropriate budgetary process for the upcoming fiscal year, where the voters, the residents, whatever we're calling them today, will be in that entire process there. The town meeting, people to vote thumbs up for the purchase or thumbs down. Don't suggest that we have the funds for the 9999 or whatever that is. That's all in the regular, usual, customary town process.
My only point on the 9999 was to get under the $10,000 without question. If you made 9998, then it takes that, any question of that away. But that's...
Shouldn't the chief and Kelly have, I think, worked with KP Law and our purchasing department to make sure we do things properly, prevent any adjustments necessary. Thank you, chief.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Signed bylaw and regulations. Still here, Glenn?
I am.
Actually, I do.
Are you awake? So Kelly, maybe you can help us with... So Kelly, maybe you can help us where we lift this up.
Sure, we actually, Glenn is here today to answer any questions you might have. Effectively, what we've done is tried to pull together some information so we can continue our momentum with our background on the signed bylaw. I've added some extra documents for the board's consideration. Really, just an expansion of some of the items we talked about the last time. I've included the bylaw itself, the actual changes that were recently made. We've included the regulations that are used to, by the Board of Selectmen, that are voted to basically allow the bylaw to be in existence and to deal with any deviations. There is a copy of the special permit that people will need to file if they have something that's out of conformance. We also have drafted a letter, which basically is suggested that we would use that letter as an informational piece to go with a lot of the information that we can mail out to a whole mailing list of businesses in the town. Basically, allowing us to educate and inform rather than to be coming down with the enforcement hammer. We want to spread the word, let people know that the bylaw has been updated. We also want to let them know what the information is and who to contact if they have a question or a complaint. So we're really just trying to follow the board's lead on this and trying to get better understanding so that we can get our ducks in a row before we sort of go to phase two. The letter that is in here represents a letter that has been drafted for the board's consideration, and I'm looking for that right now, the signage letter, okay. There's a letter, it's dated for today, but I'm happy to accept any changes or revisions to this. But effectively, we would send out a packet that would allow the new bylaw, inform people of the new bylaw and the changes. We include the rules and regs for signs, the special permit application, and the zoning complaint form. One other piece that we're suggesting is that we would look at the website to make sure that once we update all this information, we can have it in one place on the website, make it very user-friendly for people to go on the website, to do a search for the information, and then to know where to follow up.
Did you put anything in the letter about that? I haven't seen the letter, Kelly, so have you put, did you put anything in the letter?
Yeah, no.
There's two letters in our packet.
Is there?
There is, and they're different.
Oh, you know what? One's an older letter, because Glenn came to me.
That's dated in 2017.
The one dated the...
2017?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So that was, that goes back, because of course, we've been discussing this for a little bit. I put that in there as backup. Glenn had come to me last year, and it said, you know, when people were talking about, we were getting a number of different complaints about the signed bylaw.
So this is not going to go out?
The letter, the last one on your list would be going out.
Right, just making sure the January, or 2017 letter is not the version going out.
Correct.
I just want to get rid of that, because that's just there for reference.
We really need it. We're looking at the one due to December 13th.
December 13th, the last one on the list?
It's in the board docs. It's illegal signage complaint. Is that it?
That is this letter to talk about.
No, this one right here is...
The illegal one is the one that's not going out.
I get you.
So the last one on the list...
People want to freeze that differently. Just because I noticed it, it's good to know it in the first sentence. You for choosing to own or operate.
Oh, yes, so an "and".
But it could be some good...
Yeah.
To own and operate, okay.
Kelly?
Yeah?
In the draft, you have the, it says contact and special services and...
Oh, is your name Glenn? Your email is incorrect there, so, oh no, I did change it.
C@topjolife.com. No, that's right. That's the phone number, the phone. They'll be calling you at our office, right?
Oh, no.
It was 1510.
I don't remember 1510.
What should it be, Glenn?
1522. 1522.
Also grab that from the list.
I don't know, I never call it.
Alright, well, those are simple enough to update.
And Kelly, this is more probably because I knew, and I don't have the background on it, but I was trying to align and look at of the four documents that were going out with this letter, which of these that we had in our packet, your other ones being attached? Because I don't know the difference between actually Article 8 and Article 5. They have different fine levels.
Yeah.
And so I didn't know which of these was the one that was going out.
Okay, we were, now, we can take, we can cater this to whatever you think is most helpful. I was just being very comprehensive in listing all of the pieces. But we were suggesting is the administration and enforcement bylaw. Basically, that's the way we're able to, and the sign rules and regulations and the actual bylaw. So the first thing would be the bylaw as updated.
In which of the attachments is that bylaw?
Oh, okay.
The signed bylaws and regulations, the one at the very top?
Yes.
I just want to be sure that we're covering them and we see what we have.
That's the key piece.
Article 8.
And what I would suggest on this, that you put, whatever the name that you use in the...
Is consistent.
That you put that at the top as a header, so when they look at these bullet items and know which one of these is for each of the four town members.
Oh, this is that one I was, I...
You just, the, you kept that down.
So, Kelly, this is the one, am I looking at the right one? That's the first one, the other?
No, no.
On these things, for each one at the top, put whatever the name is that is in the letter. So if it says administrative and enforcement bylaw, then they should say administrative and enforcement bylaw.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And then, so that people can identify which of those three, which is which.
Yes, so, okay, the first one, the key document here is this one. Sign Regulations, Article 8.
Yeah.
That's the whole point of us sending out this mailing, is to let people know we have a bylaw, what it says, and it incorporates the new changes.
Can I make this more suggestion? This is the most important one, put it first.
Yes.
And if there's a provision that you particularly want them to look at or agree to, write in Article 8.
So is there another document in addition to this one?
Yes.
The administration enforcement, that talks about what the consequence is? There's no fine listed in here, and that's...
That is Article 5. Now, I think that this one is probably overkill. The reason I think that is because, the only reason this is here is for everyone's education. I put it on the list to be thorough. However, all of this is, is for your information, just tells all of you, if somebody doesn't follow the bylaw and there are penalties and enforcement actions, Article 5 would apply. That's what Glenn has to use in order to enforce the signed bylaw. And at the last meeting, there was a question about how do you enforce it, what are the rules, what are the fines?
We need to put that into it, because it's got special permits, how to apply and so on. That should go out with this letter so that people kind of understand the full thing. Oh, if I'm in...
In violation or non-conformity.
Yeah, if I'm in violation, whatever, I think this deserves to go in. This needs to be in there and labeled as...
And consistent names, so if...
Consistent names.
Yes, and just make sure our titles... It's up at the top, too.
It could be, right, it could be administration enforcement by, yeah, I think you've got it. One is going to be sign rules and regulations, that included in Article 8. Administration enforcement bylaw, that's Article 5. Special permit application, there's the how in Article 5.
We're drilling, we're drilling down.
But the application form itself is going to be included.
Yeah.
Okay, and the zoning complaint form, why are we putting that?
That was my exact...
We don't, we don't have to put anything...
I was suggesting, these people so speak, right?
No, no.
No, not necessarily, well, yeah.
But they're the business owners.
They won't find it against themselves.
No, but I mean, if...
I wouldn't bother with them. I definitely need to make, come and look and see.
You don't have to, yeah.
Unless you put in the more like these that don't read what you get.
Yeah, I just put in those three things, Article 8, Article 5, and the application for non-conformity.
Okay, perfect.
And maybe out of this administration and enforcement, there are multiple dollar levels? There's criminal, there's non-criminal. I don't know if the average business owner would know where they fall if they're in a violation.
So that's, that's why I thought that, I was, that's why I didn't know if this was appropriate, because I think it's going to raise a lot of questions, maybe make people more confused, as opposed to just looking at the bylaw and the special permit request and then calling us for more information. You know, I'm indifferent, really. I just want this to be effective. But I think if we give, if we bury people in paper, they're not going to look at any of it.
Yeah, and if, I was going to say, if anything, I'd do administration, enforcement, and special permit application. So that's clear why it's in there. I was reading Article 5.
We're still talking about three documents, the bylaw, the enforcement...
The one that says administration enforcement, also includes the procedures for applying for a special permit.
But that would be another document, which is a regulation.
No, that's number five. That's Article 5. It's right in there in Article 5.
Oh, okay, okay.
Which is why Article 5 needs to be included. But if we put it in the title, it's because we're not just saying, here's how we're going to hit you. It's like, also, here's how we'll apply for an exemption. And then we put the form for the exemption in there.
The thing you can do is you can yellow highlight the...
Yeah.
Yeah, because I didn't know the difference between them, whether it's $300 or if you're in the category of 25, 50, 100, whether you're criminal or non-criminal.
I don't have to explain that.
Well, God willing, God willing, nobody will be in a state of nonconformance after they get this mailing.
When you get the order and the rules, just throw them down on your desk and just highlight a block here, a line here, kind of what...
I'll figure out a way, yeah, yeah, to highlight them.
The other thing is that I agree that I think if we put in too much explanation about whether it's criminal, non-criminal, and so on and so forth, it looks a little bit more like we're gearing for a fight rather than asking for compliance. That stuff will all come up if we run into a significant problem. But this would probably go after you've had one or two or even three conversations with somebody. And I think being a little more business-friendly at the outset is important. This has to be part of Article 5. We're putting Article 5 in here because we talked about special...
I think you also got to be careful about the fact, if you give these people a packet of paper, that...
Don't read it.
It is not going to get read. You've got to be cognizant of that.
You're talking retail business, small retail business owners, they're busy. Their concern is who's on the floor, man, is anybody shoplifted, who else is...
So one of the things you could do is you could put it, special permits, application, procedure, and then parentheses, section 5.04. You put the whole of Article 5 out, but you just highlighted to them what they need to look at. In other words, it's buried in that one article, but we're giving you the whole article. You happen to be interested in what are the violations?
Yeah, I think we got it, we got it straight.
Couple of things, alright. One is, I remember at the last, at the last work session for the signs, we talked about what the fine structure was, because we found out that when we had the issue with Kennel, that our, the way the fines were worded in our bylaw was not the way they should be, and we had to go with a different procedure, okay? So I don't know, the different procedure was the 25, 50, and 100. And versus the 300 that the bylaw states. The other thing is, if you put too much information in there, something I think you have to be careful of, is that people aren't going to know whether they need a special permit for the sign or not, alright? And that's something that they should be coming to me to make the determination, because I have to deny, you know, I look at it and then tell them that they need a building permit. I deny the building permit, and that's what gets them to the selectmen as a special permit granting authority. So I think that to give, to give them that form and that information, I think something can be mentioned about a non-conforming sign may require a special permit from the Board of Selectmen, call the, I think, 887-1522, and, you know, and...
If you're in doubt...
We can help you determine whether, what's appropriate.
I really like that.
And then, because that's going to get them, you know, that's going to get them having a conversation with my office to determine whether they're...
It's friendlier.
Not complacent. It is friendlier, and the sign bylaw allows for some really large signs, especially down in the shopping center and stuff, because of the setbacks and that type of thing. So what we don't want is to have everybody filling out a, an application for a special permit for a sign and running to Donna with it when it's not necessary. And that, that would just aggravate people, too, which we don't want to do.
Doesn't it go to Diane?
No, well, no, she gets the initial application, and then it gets reviewed by me, and I make the determination whether it's, whether it's non-conforming or not.
I see, okay.
I deny it.
Then it goes.
And then I, we give it, whether I give it back to them or Diane gives it back to them, it goes from there to Donna to set up the appointment with the...
I see, okay, I didn't realize Donna was sitting there. I thought Diane did that.
No.
Glenn, do you feel like we have a number of businesses that have issues right now?
The biggest, the biggest issue that we have are the little, the little signs that everybody put everywhere. You know, the little...
Does this address that? Are they businesses or are they other people putting these little signs on?
No, they're businesses, and they're all, and they're all local businesses. You know, I mean, they're not, we don't have a lot of, you know, people putting on remote signs and that type of thing. That becomes an issue at certain times of year for landscaping companies, painting companies, schools. We had a time during Topsfield there last year that, you know, there were some, some, you know, we're hiring welding signs all up and down Route 1. We get those taken care of.
If those little signs are the ones that are the problem, should we be directing in some way to let them know that's where the issue is, so that everyone's not panicking about their regular sign?
There are other issues.
I think there's, I think there's some other issues, too, but... I think we need to get their attention. I think we need to do something to make them pay attention to what they're doing. So, you know, putting out these little signs and, you know, you have a place that has three or four of those little signs out, that just aggravates people. And the, it would be really nice if Peter Flump put in a sign down at the, at the shopping center, you know, out by the entrance that lists all the people that are in the shopping center. He talked about doing that years ago on the side entrance, but there were, I guess there were some issues with, you know, with that, and I'm not totally sure. I can't remember exactly what they were.
With us or with him?
With him.
With him, it was his decision.
It was, yeah.
Because we allow for...
Side businesses and stuff.
Multiple signs, which is a difficult thing to do.
He can put a huge sign out there.
He doesn't want to spend the money, even though that one's rotting away at the bottom, as I'm sure you've noticed.
Yeah, and he's, you know, and he's, I think he's going to do something with that, because he's got some plans. He has some plans for the place down there, and, you know, he's working on, and, you know, so, you know, hopefully, that's part of it, you know.
The letter that was in our packet from 2017, it looks like it was kind of similar to this one. Was that effective when it went out?
It didn't go out.
It never did go out.
It didn't get sent out.
No.
It didn't get sent out.
It was a work in progress, okay.
So can we go back on the documents? John, you mentioned this idea of the special permit approach in that in chapter 5. The two documents I think are the most important are chapter 13, XIIII, Roman rule 13, and the selectmen's rules and regulations, because it's in the selectmen's rules and regulations that the special permit stuff is listed. And those are the two key ones. Those are the ones that I believe we should most include, and don't include, again, this chapter 5, which includes the penalties and all kinds of other things. The procedures, the rules and regulations that we have written back 2009, last updated, are the ones that give the guidelines for what you need to do if you have a non-conforming sign, whatever else. So again, my idea is those are the two key ones, and as Mark said, if you have too much, they won't read it. And if those are the key ones and we can agree on that, then those are the ones that we should put in there. On the website, we can have links to all of these.
So I guess I'm confused, because Article 5 has permit granting authority and special permit granting authority, and then you go down a little bit further to all public hearing, all the stuff that has to be in it, says special permit granting authority on B, and then you get down to 504, special permits, application, procedure. It seems to me that it's here. I didn't realize there's another one in Article 13.
No, it's not in 13. You got your board docs there?
I do, I'm looking at it right now.
Just pick, look at the documents, so, yeah, so it's...
This one, administration enforcement?
That one, right there, yeah. So those are the ones that are the, the rules and regulations that the selectmen have set aside for the sign.
Based upon application, sign regulations, like this probably all needs to go. This is zoning by, the sign regulations, zoning by law. The reason I'm kind of interested here is it says special permits will be granted on Article 5, will be granted by the planning board.
Correct, but this is not a planning board, though. This is special permits that, based on bylaw, based on 13, the special permit granting authority for signs in accordance with chapter 13 is, is by the selectmen, and that why it says, that's the procedures for the selectmen.
I understand, what I'm surprised about is, I'm going to find this here, Article 5.
What we're talking, I'd like to volunteer, I'd like to work with Kelly on this letter and try to get, take the comments that you have about the non-conforming signs, and maybe come down and talk with you more, by trying to get the right kind of wording in on it. Maybe come down, talk with you more, trying to get the right kind of wording in on it. But I'm willing to do that for the next meeting.
I do. I just want to find this, I don't have any problem with that. I just want to find this one thing just so we can point it out. This thing here says, special granting authority. The permit, the top field planning, planning board shall be the special permit granting authority pursuant to the zoning act. In this capacity, the planning board shall be responsible for hearing and deciding on applications for special permits for the following. So these talk about general permits. The question is, are we doing sign permits differently?
Yes.
No, no question about it.
Yes. That's what thirteen does.
That's right.
Okay, so as long as, okay, so in a sense.
Article five is a much more encompassing kind of thing.
Yeah, but maybe we don't need Article five because I was leaning on Article five as how we do the special permits. But special permits for signs.
I'm going to say there's a consensus among us that we should finally reduce it off. And we send out the ones that are really needed.
Thank you.
That's great.
And certainly in the, in the letter that goes out. And if you, you know, maybe, maybe one specific section on the website, for a while anyway, that deals with the signs and just point people in that direction in that letter. You know, if they have, if they have any questions and give, you know, give our phone number.
Maybe I can put the link right within the letter, the form of the letter.
Yeah, then they can, they can do, then let them, let them do a little bit of research or, or can call if they're not comfortable with the computer stuff, you know what I mean?
And if there's a specific provision or paragraph within one of the documents, you just do the word, just in yellow color there.
And to put something in there that has like the special permit granting authority as it's listed, as it's listed here and, and what you just read, it's just going to confuse people because they absolutely.
No, I hear you. I hear you. I, I, I'm, I'm fine in terms of reviewing this and tuning it up. I think we're moving in exactly the right direction.
One other small thing I found that's remarkable on the way down the line, weed, you want to say weed would do a lot of.
Oh, yes. Relative to this, this is a first step. So we're sending this out to make businesses aware, some rules have changed. They have to be in conformance. If they have questions, call us. Is there a step two in our process here? So for those people who have not contacted us and we know that there are issues, you know, our goal was to ensure that people understood what the bylaws were, make changes where we saw fit, and make sure that they're enforced. So as a group working towards that goal, do we have a step two? Or has there been any discussion that if this letter does not cause any behavioral changes and we still see the signs, what do we do?
So January two thousand seventeen letter with a little bit of adjustment will go to that particular business. That's my take on it.
With a love note for Glenn.
Step two, in my opinion, is you, you send a letter to those folks that have a sign that doesn't meet the bylaw and that they haven't responded to the letter that we sent you a month ago or two months ago or something.
So it doesn't require a zoning complaint form. We are going to take that on ourselves to know which businesses we're going to be sending these to. We don't need to follow that.
Right. We're, we're going to have to monitor it for a little while. I mean, it's, it, it can, it can be a huge cumbersome job to, just to want it to signs.
Oh, no question.
You know what I mean? Because there's, there's so many of them and which ones are non-conforming and which ones aren't. Because the ones, you know, as we talked about in the last meeting, some of the ones that are non-conforming now weren't non-conforming necessarily when they were put up.
And may be grandfathered.
And they may, and they may be grandfathered. And so there's, there's, there's issues. It's not, it's not cut and dry like everybody says it is, like everybody seems to think it is that, you know, it doesn't comply with today's bylaw. So that means it, it.
It's legal.
This is.
There are probably categories that we could break it into. There are things that are obviously, they never have been legal. They're not legal now. They're the first ones to have a discussion.
I think the biggest, I think the biggest thing with, with at least the appearance of compliance with the signed bylaw is going to be getting rid of all of these little tiny.
Sticking to the ground.
Stuck in the ground, the two sticks are sticking in the ground.
The curb sign and they break.
Yeah, which is. But there are also flags and other things that I think.
The, the, the shell station down there makes it crazy.
A major violator is the, is the shell station.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
But your key concern are the signs with the wire posts that go in, that come up. Those are the ones that I think a lot of people are concerned about. They kind of grow up. It's, it's one kind only, but there's lots of them. That's why they seem to be the bigger issue right now.
And that's what this was, this is, that's pretty much what this was designed to target. And I think some of the sandwich board signs too. And I honestly, I have to reread the, the, the signed bylaw with.